The floor is yours.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee for March 17th is now, 2020 is now, is now in session. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15th, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx, a Zoom, sorry, by, why, by the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand icon along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to, to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to unmute. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the irrelevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Let me just take a quick roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, Mr. Fortune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock cases. We have the address first, please. Madam Chair, I don't know if Mr. Pulgeni's on, but the Cherokee Street is being deferred to next month. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it in and then case BOA.
Yes, my name is, my name is Amy Kelly. I'm speaking on behalf of John Pulgeni this evening in regards to case BOA.
Hold on a minute, please.
Yeah, let me call it into the record, please. For the record, call BOA 1289454 for Cherokee Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Amy Kelly, and it's for Cherokee Street.
Um, please, Mr. Fortune, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
I'll second.
I to him in support. The date?
It will be April 14th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for five o'clock? Hearing none. I'll call the first case, calling BOA 1241879615 East Third Street. This is an existing two-family builder with new egress stairs in the rear of the building. The violation is Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient, and Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Patricia's on for that one second. Okay, Patricia, go ahead. Hi, Patricia, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Patricia Fisher. I am an architect representing the building owner. I'm at 35 Fisher Road in Weymouth, Massachusetts.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, please tell us what's being proposed.
My client, Mr. Mohammed Omer, purchased this two-family home in South Boston. He has done a beautiful job renovating.
Go ahead, please.
All right, something happened, somebody promoted panelist, and then I got muted again. All right, so my client has purchased and beautifully renovated this two-family home. The building is an existing non-conforming building on the site. It's too close to the side lot lines, existing.
Okay, so tell us about the stairs. Is this, is this related to a deck? Or is it purely an egress set of stairs for health and safety?
I can't, I can't hear Ms. Fisher, is that?
Yes, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Ambassador, can you help? Ms. Tom, or Ms. Fisher, can you increase your volume?
It's up at 100% now. I'll just raise my voice. Yep, sorry, that's a constant problem I have. The staircase at the rear of the building is the recall, the building code required second means of egress. There is also a platform there that's slightly larger than needed for means of egress. And it's to give the homeowner or the tenant someplace to set up a chair on the outside to get a little bit of fresh air.
What did I mention then of that landing?
Okay, could you go back? I don't have control of the screen here.
Yes, just tell us.
All right, stop right there. Okay, the, the landing is 12 by 8. Of that, 4 by 8 is required to make the staircase work. So there is probably an additional 4 by 4 square feet, I mean, sorry, 4 by 8 square feet there than above what is required by code.
Okay, okay. And tell us about, I know this is not before us, but we do see occupancy in the basement. Is that a basement or is it a walkout?
That's a walkout. It was previously occupied with bedrooms.
You know, I get it, but you know, in some cases it may have been done illegally. And if we see something, we cannot kind of look the other way.
Oh, correct, yes.
Yes, so please tell us about the, the floor to ceiling height and the floor to sill height in those, in those bedrooms.
The floor to ceiling, yeah, the floor to ceiling is currently at eight feet. The window sills in two of the bedrooms are to code. The front bedroom will have a egress well cut into the side of the lot and the windowsill lowered to make that meet the code, which is a windowsill at 43 inches above the finished floor. And the window well is nine square feet.
Okay, um, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question. I agree, the, the lower level, it is a full walkout and the, the one bedroom will, I think it's fine. It's right at the grade point, so I don't have any issue with that per se. One question I did have was, it's, you know, it's a fairly tight rear yard condition. It, there's no site plan. Can you just tell me the dimension between the rear of the house and the adjacent house that kind of comes back behind it? By my calculations, it's like 18 feet, 17 feet, is that about right? And the stairs eight feet wide, so there's still about 10 feet between you and the other adjacent building? Is that, can you just confirm that?
Do you have the site plan? Do I need to bring it up on the screen?
Get here.
Do you have it? Oh, I have the site plan.
Okay, it's not in the package that I have, so I didn't, I couldn't tell those dimensions.
Okay, do you want me to bring it up on the screen?
No, you just, can you just tell me the approximate dimension between the rear and the adjacent budding house?
Um, eight feet.
Clear of your deck?
Clear of the proposed deck. Yes, yes, eight feet clear of the proposed deck.
Okay, got it. All right, no other questions.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
I'm sure I have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, we, secretary here, we do have two letters of support.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I to him in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 12776.
I had a, I had a question on that existing one. I had my hand raised.
Um, who is this?
This is a neighbor, the neighbor that lives directly behind.
Okay, so we did ask about the, the, the deck. And I think you've gotten that in, on the record. So the landing is eight by four and it's four by eight for the stairs.
Is, is the necessary four feet that, you know, we're going to need an easement for on that egress necessary? That infringes upon, you know, the lot lines that are, are going to present a challenge for myself and my family if people are on those decks often. They're, it's pretty close to my house, right?
So we, we have made a motion, it's carried to approve because the, the proposed little deck is, doesn't give much room for much, quote, hangout. You know, so, so it has been, has been approved, okay? So may I have, Mr. Fortune, the next case?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 127769641 Cornwall Street. This is to construct a new roof dormer to extend living space to the attic in existing two-family dwelling. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Francisco Skelton, and I am the owner of 41 Cornwall Street in Jamaica Plain.
Do you live there?
Uh, I used to, no now.
Um.
I do live there, but I mean, I cannot live there now.
I see. Will you be intending to move back when it's done?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, so then tell us what's, what you're proposing to do.
Okay, well, last year on July 6th, my house was hit by lightning and the roof was damaged. So the roof and the house have to be repaired. I just want to extend the dormers of the house in the attic, so I have more living space in the two bedrooms. I am not raising the elevation. I am only hoping to extend the dormers that exist. And the reason why I want to extend the dormers is because I want my bedroom to be bigger and I want my son and his family to have more space in the other bedroom when they come to, to visit me. And also I have had the aboriginal meetings with the.
Hold on, hold on, sir, so hold on. So, um, in, in that dormer, you will have two bedrooms, right? How many bedrooms?
Right now, right now I have two bedrooms, so if I can be able to extend the dormers, I will be able to have more space.
Okay, two larger bedrooms, okay.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, hold on. Is anybody here to speak either in, oh, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions, very straightforward, and I think it's consistent with the, the neighborhood in terms of what he's proposing, no questions.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or offer in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Tiffany Caballero from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a butters meeting facilitated for this applicant. They received community support from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Station, I'm sorry, the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, as well as the Jamaica Plain Zoning Subcommittee. And at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and defer the board's judgment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure I do have a raised hand. Charles Hills, are you here to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, I'm here to.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Charles Hills, and I'm resident at 9 Haverford Street in Jamaica Plain.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm here to speak in support of Mr. Skelton's project. I attended all of the neighborhood meetings that Mr. Skelton had with the Brookside Neighborhood Association, the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association, and the zoning committee of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council as well. I've known Mr. Skelton and his family for 50 years. He grew up across the street from me, um, in his family home at 12 Haverford Street.
Um, thank you, thank you. Mr. Skelton, this is a lot of work for a house struck by lightning, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so anybody else in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have five letters of support.
Excellent. Ms. Ambassador, are we all set?
Yes, we are.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. I, I think you can approve with, with just straight up approval. I don't, there's, it's very straightforward, so no question.
I'll second that motion.
I to him in support, so you're all set, Mr. Skelton. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good luck. Calling the next case, calling BOA 12814996 Port Norfolk, Port Norfolk Street. This is a gut interior of a home and reinforced existing structure, raise the second floor to meet code and add dormers. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, and Article 65, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please. Alexander Bender, 6 Port Norfolk Street.
So, Mr. Bender, tell us what you're proposing to do.
So the footprint of the house is going to stay the same. It's going to be pretty much a gut down to the studs. New layout on the first floor, second floor remains pretty much the same, other than the staircase moving to come up to code and raising the ceiling to come up to code. And then the issue came in with adding dormers to the roof to actually be able to use that.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a one-family or a two-family?
Single family, and it's going to be owner occupied.
Single family, owner occupied, you're going to be the, the occupant?
Yes.
Okay, and tell us about the, the, the height with the proposed dormer.
So the, the, the peak of the roof is only going to come up three feet, which is still within code.
It's going to come up three stories?
No, I'm sorry, it's currently a two and a half story. So it's going to be just adding dormers to that half of story.
I see, okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. I think that, I, I understand the proposal. I think that in general, I'm okay with it. I think the, the, the long dormers and the addition of the height, it, it's proportionally a little bit sort of different, I think. So I think maybe BPDA review on this, if it's approved, just to make sure that the proportions work for the house. But no questions on the actual scope of the expansion.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
It's good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in the butters meeting on January 26th of this year where neighbors voiced support for the project. The Port Norfolk Civic Association also wrote a letter of support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have that letter from Port Norfolk.
Okay.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. I just have a question. You're not in a flood zone, are you?
No, Port Norfolk Street's not a flood zone, no.
Okay, okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review related to the dormer and the additional height of the roof.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, I to him in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Calling the next case, calling BOA 127721343 Pear Street. This is a change of act from a one-family to a two-family with a new addition. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Afternoon, Madam Chair and Subcommittee. My name is Jolene Collins. I'm a licensed contractor at Allen's Construction and Remodeling, representing the owners of the property at 43 Pear Street, Bishop Dr. Glenn Prosper, as well as Pastor Pauline Prosper. Our pro, pro, proposal is to build a second unit onto the rear of the single-family house. This second unit is going to be 59 by 19 square feet with a 24 by 20, 20-foot attached garage that will be attached to the unit. We have a couple of violations.
Hold on for a minute, please. So this is the plan that's up on the screen is what it's proposed to be, right?
Yes, this is the proposal.
Okay, and so I think we have a few questions. With, what we're interested in is what is the rear yard that's asked by the zoning? And what is the rear yard that is proposed?
So it looks like, and if you reference A dash zero on the contractor plans, it shows that the rear setback is going to, excuse me, the rear yard minimum depth should be 40 feet, but we currently have 19.6 feet in the rear. I will make mention that in the rear of the building, there is a commercial space. So there's no actual residential area behind the building.
Okay, um, and then talk about the side yard, what's required and what's being proposed?
So the side yard requirements are 10 feet on either side. We are proposing three feet, one inch on one side of the building and then three feet, six, in, six inches on the right side of the building.
Okay, I, I just have to tell you off the bat.
Yes.
Just looking at this, it is, it does look rather big and solid. And we are not used to seeing designs like this because, you know, one of our goals as a board is to make sure that light and air and other kinds of impacts are not felt by the neighbors. Because we do understand that there might be a commercial structure on the rear today, but the possibility is, or there is the possibility in the future that it may go to a residential use. Okay, so I, I will put that out there just so that you kind of understand our thinking, okay?
Understood. I will say that the owners of this property, Bishop Glenn Prosper, as well as Pastor Pauline Prosper, have been in the neighborhood and living in that saint, that specific house for the last 30 years. They now are grandparents, or they're parents and now grandparents, and are looking to stay and continue in this space and, 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 and have that land in the back to be accessible for their family and their growing family. They did speak with the abutters as.
Everybody, you know, we, we appreciate what abutters have to say and everybody has to say, but it is, it is advisory to the board. Um, so has, have the homeowners looked at other options to accommodate that second unit? Because it, and what's the zoning district here?
So the zoning, zoning district, um, on the street, there's a single families, but there are also many multifamily units.
No, no.
Madam Chair, it's a 2F5000.
It's a 2F5000, okay. And, um, and the thing is that, that it, the, the BPDA, who also advises us as the Board of Appeal, as the planning agency for the city, they're, they're recommending denial without prejudice. Um, so, and, and that, and, and, and their recommendation is based on the proposal covering a lot of the lot and insufficient setback, insufficient open space. Um, and so, you know, so, so there is, you know, a planning perspective that's brought into this through their recommendation. So I'm going to ask you if you would prefer to have a decision made by this board? Or would you prefer a deferral and come back with a revised plan?
So I would say that we can do a deferral at this point and come up with a revised plan. Um, if that is something that, that makes sense. But I would have to speak with the owners in order for them to, to, to move forward. At this, at this point, I think that would be the best options that we can come together and make the final decision on the feasibility.
Okay, so do you want to have a couple of minutes to speak with them offline? Or would you like us to make a decision now?
Yes, if we can just have a couple of minutes to speak with them offline, and then we can, I will be able to contact them and then we can speak further.
Okay, so.
At the end of this meeting.
Okay, so, so what I'm, what we're going to do is proceed with the next projects. Please let Ms. Ambassador know, or, sorry, Ms. Ambassador, know when you're ready to come back on, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
No worries.
Hey, Madam Chair, we'll go to the next case, calling BOA 129044320 Orchard Street. This is the builder dormer created a new master bedroom. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Justin Rice, 20 Orchard Street in Jamaica Plain. My wife and I live in a single-family home here at 20 Orchard Street with our three young children. We are seeking a modest four and a half foot side yard setback relief for a dormer for, I just have to correct you, it's for a primary bathroom, not for a bedroom. Yeah, that will allow us to most efficiently use our space and bring our home up to modern standards. Our home is, is an existing non-conforming building.
Okay, hold on, hold on, sir. Um, so, so just so that we are clear, that the only space in the, the only use for that space in the attic is going to be a bathroom?
Correct.
No bedroom, but the plans before us show a bedroom.
That bedroom's existing.
Madam Chair, secretary here, I was in error in saying that. It does say master. Madam Chair, Secretary here, I was in error in saying that. It does say master bathroom.
Oh, I'm sorry, I too read it as master bedroom.
I'm so used to seeing master, usually it's a master bedroom, not a master bathroom.
Link to that, so, okay. In the attic, tell us the floor-to-ceiling height.
Sorry, my designer is going to get into the details for me. If I may just have a quick moment, I won't take too much time. Our home's an existing non-conforming building. The dormer will sit within the home's footprint and not exceed the existing roof line. We do not seek to change the existing setback. The dormer is designed for the southwest corner because plumbing for the bathroom was brought up to the third floor by the previous owner. The previous owner also installed an adjacent HVAC system that makes it difficult and expensive to relocate the dormer to another space. The four-and-a-half feet that we are seeking through the zoning variance has minimal to no impact to our neighbors. Our city councillor and state representative have submitted letters of support.
Hold on, Mr. Rice. Get all that information from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Okay, so how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I have reviewed everything. There were shadow studies. I think this is a fairly straightforward proposal and fairly de minimis in terms of the ask of the square footage, but I think no questions in terms of the proposal.
For a little street like Orchard, this raised a lot of emails back and forth, didn't it? Is anybody here to speak?
May I address that, please?
No, it's okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support, but we do have letters of opposition. And we also have a letter of opposition from the JP Jamaica Pond Association.
Okay.
But may I let you know that one of the letter of opposition.
Hold on, please. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? Miss Ambassador?
Yes, I do have one raised hand here, one second. Peter. Send the request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Go ahead, Peter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Secretary and Chair. I'll be very brief due to the time constraints here. There are five direct abutters to this property. There are four letters of opposition to this proposed project. And I have sent, I believe they have all this.
So hold on, so I need your name and your address and a very specific reason why you're opposing this proposal.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Peter Elmets, twenty-one Prince Street.
And your reason?
Yes, I am a direct abutter. I live right behind twenty Orchard Street. I've been here a resident for fifty-four years. And it's going to, it's looming, the proposed project is going to be looming over the site that I have for my house. There are five direct abutters to this property. There are four letters of opposition, which your office, I believe, has. So four out of the five abutters are opposed to this project. And also, at the December sixth Jamaica Pond Association Board Meeting, it was voted, the board voted in opposition to oppose this project.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, close up your comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Couple more things. There was stated at the JPNC that they, Ms. Rice had mentioned, there's only one bathroom in the house. They actually, there are two full bathrooms and a half, so two and a half bathrooms already exist there. And also, the application indicated that there is no living space down in the basement where there is a family room. The measurement, I don't know if you're interested in the measurement, you have that in the documentation. So there were some incorrect information provided to the community.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services?
Danielle is on. Danielle, you're on mute.
Yes, I can hear you all. Is this for forty-three Pierce Street?
Twenty Orchard.
Okay, this is not for me. Jessica, I raised my hand by accident.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I tried to.
Danielle, while you're here about Pierce, they are making a decision whether to defer or have us go through our process, okay?
Yep, I heard that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Miss Ambassador, are there any other raised hands?
No, ma'am, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, this looks like a de minimis project. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review, just to make sure that they understand what the constraints of the dormer are. But I think it's fairly straightforward.
I'm going to second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're set with that proviso.
Madam Chair, would you like to go back to Pierce Street, or should I go to Danville?
Let's go on, because I don't think we've heard back.
Okay.
You're ready?
All right, calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-seven-seven-three-eight-zero, eleven Danville Street. This is to construct a one-story addition to the rear of an existing single-family detached dwelling. The addition includes a finished basement and a family room on the first floor. Violation is Article fifty-six, Section eight, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article fifty-six, Section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Eighty-two Spring Street.
And we missed your name.
Anabek Nachtegal.
And that's from our office. It's Derek Rubenoff from Derek Rubenoff Architect, eighty-two Spring Street as well. And my colleague Anabek Nagto Go will take the lead here, present.
So you're here for eleven Danville, right?
That's correct.
Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. So we are proposing a rear addition to the single-family in West Roxbury. And we are showing that the addition have a side setback violation on the north side. Actually, just scroll up a little bit. Can you see that?
So can you tell us the dimension of that addition, please?
Yes, actually, if you can scroll down. Should be looking at. Actually, I'm sorry. Let me just go, she.
This looks good. Can you please blow it out so we can see it better? Perfect. Okay, so it's meeting the building line. And is it a five-foot, what is the dimension of that addition again?
The dimension of the addition is about twenty, the length is twenty-six feet and the depth toward the rear yard is about twelve foot six.
Okay. And what's, you see, you're extending, essentially extending that side yard violation, right?
Yes, so we are five feet away from the property line, so we are okay with building code.
But what does the zoning require? Ten feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
The existing house is less than that, it's four foot three.
And the basic use of that will be for a family room?
To remain a single family. It's a rear addition and it's a family room.
Okay, and did you say something about occupancy in the basement?
No.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, and I think it's fairly straightforward. The rear setback is in, it's just an extension of the side yard. No questions, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jake Lacy from the Office of Neighborhood Services. A community meeting was held with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on the twenty-fifth of January of this year, where the council voted seven-zero in support of the project. We have not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the board. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a few letters of support.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, it looks like Pierce is ready. Do you want me to call him back?
Yes, why don't we?
Okay, calling BOA one-two-seven-seven-two-one-three, forty-three Pierce Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Subcommittee. Again, this is Jolene Collins, representing Bishop Glenn Prosper and Pastor Pauline Prosper for forty-three Pierce Street. After speaking with the owners, we've decided to defer to a future meeting so that we can devise and redesign a new plan that is better accommodating to the concerns of the BPDA as well as the Board of Appeal office. But I did, go ahead. I did want to ask if you have and can provide me with a recap on what the BPDA's concerns are, so that we can consult with the owners and the architect on a scaled back or redesign of the property at forty-three Pierce.
Well, let's, so first of all, so, Tom, if you could make sure Ms. Collins gets a copy of the BPDA recommendation, that would be helpful, okay? Okay, and so let's go ahead and get a motion on the table here.
Madam Chair, Secretary, would you want to see this in the full board? Or would you rather see this at a subcommittee meeting? And if so, we can do a subcommittee in April, but maybe it might be beneficial in May.
May would be better, I think. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for deferral.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, and the date?
And that will be five nineteen, at five PM, May nineteenth at five PM.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Subcommittee. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-eight-zero-zero-eight-three-fifteen Gertrude Road. This is a renovation and addition of Unit Two in the existing two-family condominium building. The scope includes a slightly revised layout on the second and an addition of a shed dormer in the attic floor to the right side of the house to contain a master suite. There's no change to the building footprint or height. The violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. And Article fifty-six, Section eight, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Anabek Nachtegal for fifteen Gertrude, eighty-two Spring Street.
And Derek Rubenoff, your Anabek Nagto Go's colleague, also from eighty-two Spring Street, Derek Rubenoff Architect. And then we also have Adam Detour of fifteen Gertrude Road, who is the owner of this condo, the upper condo in this two-family.
Let's start off with, what is the zoning district? This is.
One F six thousand in West Roxbury.
It's a one F district, and so this is a two-family in a one-family district. Okay, tell us what is proposed as a shed dormer?
We are proposing on the second floor, so the attic space, actually, sorry. We're adding a shed dormer that will have a master bedroom and a master bath.
Okay, and how many bedrooms in this second unit?
Just a second. I think there's two bedrooms, three bedrooms.
Two bedrooms presently. I think we'd be adding a third here.
Okay.
Be adding a third here.
So, a quick question for you, Derek. How's this old house doing with your building?
Thank you so much for asking. We just filmed our wrap episode last Wednesday, and we're all done. So thank you, thank you for asking.
Swing by one time to see what it looks like.
You're welcome anytime.
So how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions, very straightforward.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this?
Apologies, Madam Chair and members of the board, Jake Lacy again with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Community meeting was held with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on the twenty-fifth of January of this year, where the council voted seven oh, seven and zero in support of the project. We have not received any letters of opposition, and we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have those same letters the Mayor's Office spoke of.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-eight-three-six-nine-six, twelve-thirty Soldiers Field Road. Build a fitness center. It consists of showers, restrooms, locker rooms, office space, exercise area. Violation is Article fifty-one, Section sixteen. Fitness center is conditionally used in the CC one sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mia Lazarovich at twelve-thirty Soldiers Field Road.
So please tell us, is this within a project that went through an Article eighty? Or is it an existing building where it's just a proposed change of use?
It's an existing building with a proposed change of use, so we won't be changing the building, the parking, green spaces, none of it.
Okay, so tell us about this fitness center? The hours of operation, how is parking to be accommodated?
So there's an existing parking lot that's quite large, and we will have a portion of those spaces designated to us by our landlord. It's a forty-seven-hundred-square-foot fitness club, community-driven, small business. We're not affiliated with any other gym or chain. Like we said, we're not changing the existing building at all, and, yeah.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think this came through for a lab use on the balance of the building. I was trying to put it together as well.
That's right.
Okay, so I was wondering about, okay, so yeah, no questions on this proposed scope. I think it makes sense to me, so, okay.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. So the applicant flyer, the neighborhood, our office did not hear any concerns from the Butters. They also went to the Austin Civic Association, received their full support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have one letter of support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for rediscussion, calling case BOA one-one-nine-four-six-two-zero, thirty-three Bartlett Street. This is a renovation in existing third-floor attic. Renovated space will consist of a master bedroom, not a bathroom, a bedroom, along with the bath and guest bedroom. The existing gable roof will be enlarged with an addition of shed and gable dormers. The violation is Article sixty-two, Section twenty-five. Two dormers are proposed, roof structure restriction, and Article sixty-two, Section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Timothy Shan. I'm the architect for the project. Yeah, in short, this is an existing single-family owner-occupied house. And this current third-floor attic is just too small, so we're making it bigger. Basically, the building will be about three-and-a-half feet higher. It will still be almost four feet under the thirty-five-foot requirement. You know, the thirty-five maximum height requirement. And essentially, what we're doing is we're adding a master bedroom, a minimal bedroom and a bathroom on this third floor. The neighborhood process, we've had a few deferrals.
I'm sorry, Tim, why were you deferred the last time?
We just needed time to work with the neighbors. It's gone really well with the neighbors. I think we even have a letter of support. And we were just working with the Butters at thirty-five, Devon Bow, and Paul at thirty-one on the right. So we just took the time to do a shadow, you know, a couple of shadow studies.
Okay.
Yeah, moved some windows around. We eliminated that gable on the left. And on the right side, we just moved the dormer back, you know, to help the solar angle for Paul thirty-one.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson? Do you have? Is this, do you have the most updated set?
I believe so, yes. And it looks fairly straightforward. I mean, obviously, I think raising it changes a little bit of the proportion, so that would sort of be my only question, but not necessarily a question for the proposed scope. So I'm fine with what the proposal is, yeah.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office elected to defer judgment to the board from their notes from the liaison that conducted the community process. No concerns were raised from the butters and at this time, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I think would be BPDA Design Review just because of the raising of the entire roof, just to make sure everything proportionally looks good.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned. I will see the staff and board members on Tuesday.
Thank you, have a good night.